We'll bring the special city council meeting of June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four to order at five ten. Please rise and recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Um, Pam is not here. Mr. Gross.
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel.
You're.
Mrs. Powell is not here. Mrs. Race.
Yeah.
And Lisa Atchison, Ms. Atchison, the mayor is here. Do we want, I would entertain a motion to excuse the absent members if applicable.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Four zero passes. Moving on to public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor. And then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would, if you would like, um, if you want us to reply to you. Sometimes we ask for the address. Are there any members of the public that would like to make public comment? Mono? Oh, I'd be part of your PT. I can imagine. Maybe, yeah.
Mark Laws, live right behind City Hall. All here tonight, and I'm especially thankful for the candidates that have decided to put their resume and their name in to be considered for a city council spot. So, thank you to those, those folks, and I appreciate our, our officers that are here. They support us really well, and it's great to have them in the positions there, and thank you.
Mr. Laws. Anybody online or anybody else in the audience? Anybody online that wants to speak, raise your hand? Do we have anybody online? Okay, all right. Seeing no public, more public comments, we will now move on to the adoption of the agenda. We got some people coming in, it sounds like. We, um, uh, would like, somebody would like to make the motion to adopt the agenda? To adopt the agenda?
I'll second that.
No additions or corrections needed? Okay, um, roll call vote. Mr. Hall. Yeah, Mr. Hall is not here anymore. Mr. Gross, I'm sorry, I tried to do it without my little paper in front of me. Mr. Gross.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Race.
Us.
Some votes yes, four zero. Sorry about that. Yes. Any, um, sorry, I'm. Uh, we have no action items and our discussion items is where we put the city council interviews. Darla, would you like to review the process?
Since we only have two candidates here at this time, I have both other names on a piece of paper. We'll throw them in a hat, we'll draw randomly who goes first. Whoever, um, is not chosen first will be escorted out of the room. We'll do the interview of the first candidate, the second candidate will come in, and then third candidate, all same questions. Rotate when we're done. Good, y'all have the questions and beside your computers there.
Jerry, why don't you take the hands? Oh. Renee, why don't you take, uh, you want to take? You be neck. Seem to be having a tight night tonight, yeah.
You're locked in, you can't run.
Yeah.
You're locked in here now, you can't run.
Can you, um, let us know what your, your name is?
C K E T T.
Yeah. It looks like you're gonna start. Renee.
Hi. What experience do you have in local government and policy making?
I don't have any, actually. Um, I have always wanted to, but kind of always shied away from it, because I've never really thought that I was very good at public speaking until I married my wife and she's like, I don't understand why you don't do these kinds of things. Um, once I look at something, I always try to look at it from every side, no matter what it is. Um, and I don't, I, and what I, you know, what I, uh, what I'm looking at or whatever decision I make, so.
Yeah. Okay. I will try to talk in my less manly voice, but that's not gonna work, so, okay. Uh, how would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on the city council?
First is listening, um, to everyone, and then again, trying to find the best situation, and you can't please everybody, but what you can do is make it as objective as possible for everyone. And again, not everybody's gonna be happy about it, but unfortunately, at the end of the day, you have to try to make compromises and making sure that, um, and again, not everybody's needs are gonna be met, but you can do your best in what you have in front of you, so.
Thank you.
Me again.
As a city council member, you'll be required to make decisions that may not always align with popular opinion. Can you describe a situation where you had to make a tough decision, and how did you handle it?
Um, I have six kids at home, so. I, I, I have to do that quite a bit, um. I, and I guess this is kind of personal, um, my, my kids, my oldest mother, um, we'd been going back and forth for quite a few years about, um, whether they should stay with us or stay with her. Um, she, they weren't in a very good situation. I had tried everything, I had tried helping the state, and I always kept my cool with her. Um, always trying to make it the best for my kids, and that's what I do is every day I wake up, I go to work, I take care of my kids, I take care of my wife, and do it all over again. Um, and I've never situation where I was yelling or, you know, flying off the handle, whatnot, um, because it doesn't help, doesn't, it doesn't solve a situation, it actually more or less makes it worse. Um, so, I've always been told, kill people with kindness and deal with, you know, the repercussions later, so.
Great, thank you. How did you handle disagreements between yourself and others? How do you handle them? How do you handle disagreements between yourself and others?
Actually, I handle them pretty well, most of the time, um, unless it's my kids. Um, it just, it all comes down to, um, you know, how you obviously portray yourself and just speaking with other people. Um, if, even if they're talking disrespectful to you, you never change your integrity, because at some, or at every point in my life, I've always been told integrity is the most important part of any conversation and any interaction with other human beings, whether they're children, whether they're adults, um, because again, you know, if I have a conversation with any of you, I want you to say, I had a great conversation, regardless of what it is, so again, I, I feel like that's probably the most important thing.
What is your opinion on the importance of public engagement in the decision, in the decision-making process?
Huge, uh, it's a huge impact, um, and I'm actually kind of surprised that there's not more people here today. Um, I've noticed that quite a bit, because I follow the, the Cedar Facebook page and I see, you know, I kind of read through it and again, I work third shift, so when I'm waking up and reading it and stuff like that, it's normally like me trying to get ready for work and stuff. Um, and a lot of the times, it's more, I don't see many people engaging with you and with the city in general, and it's kind of sad, because I came from a big city, Detroit, Levonia area, I don't know if anybody knows that, um, where most people were unheard, and in a small town like this, this is why I love this town, and I moved here eight years ago, um, is you can walk up, I could, I've probably seen all of you here or anywhere in the city at some point in the last eight years that I've lived here, and you don't normally get that anywhere else, so I, I really think that it's really important, especially in a small town like this.
Okay, um, excuse me one second, I'm gonna, um, let's, um, let the record show that Rose Powell is here at five twenty-two. Um, let her get a little together. Um, the next question for you would be, um, Jerry's got a question, and then you have one toward the bottom. You see the one above where Pam is? Yeah, okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Well, for you, but I did read your question, so, okay.
Different special meeting, and I forgot about this one.
Okay, uh, are you familiar with the various laws and regulations that apply to the municipal government?
Um, unfortunately, I follow a lot of federal politics, um, and a lot of state politics right now, um, and that's also why I wanted to get involved in city council, um, was to get better involved with the city, um, because again, you know, most people think of federal politics, state politics are the most important, but they're not, it's actually city council, you know, um, student council, stuff like that, local stuff, um, so that's why I decided that I need to get better involved in this.
Thank you.
Hey. So how do you stay informed about current events and issues affecting the city, especially since we don't have a local newspaper anymore?
Oh, again, I follow pretty closely the Cedar Springs Facebook page, um, and then after most meetings, can't say, I, I do every single one. Um, but I try to read through, um, and see what the topics are, what people are saying about it and stuff like that. Um, and I don't normally read comments, because most of the time it's people who don't even come to the meetings in the first place, but I most of the time read those, so. Trying to get a feel for everything.
Ever stopped into a council meeting?
No, not yet, no.
Um, am I Pam or?
Well, you want me to do Pam now?
Um, I did want to just make a mention, we do have all of our meetings on, on YouTube page. You saw any of those or not?
No, actually I didn't.
And I'm, I don't, I don't think I even knew that, to be truthfully honest with you, that's why I try to, like, because
We've been on for a couple of years now, and we're still trying to get it out there, but we just wondered, you know, just wondered if you had heard anything for a plug.
Yeah.
People just don't even pay attention to it. That's like we were talking, you guys were talking earlier about that, um, that concert. I literally live maybe half a block away from that, and I didn't even know what was happening, so.
Hey, so how would you approach budgeting for the city's services and programs?
Um, it just depends, it, I, I've always took budgeting even at home, um, looking at it as, okay, we have this budget, but also what are the other things that not only are important to the city, but are important to the people as well? Um, because that's, again, that's what's most important, is taking care of the, the people of Cedar Springs, so.
Basically, you're saying you're prioritizing, okay, just wanted to make sure that I was reading it right, so.
Me again, feel like I'm doing a lot of work over here, you guys. Uh, collaboration with neighboring municipalities is essential for addressing shared challenges and pursuing common goals. How do you propose to strengthen partnerships and collaboration between Cedar Springs and neighboring communities?
I guess it really depends, um, I would say that, like, I was following the library thing that was going on. I was following it closely, but not, you know, right on top of it, but, um, it sounded to me like there was quite a few things that were, you know, being not only left out, but, um, Cedar was kind of holding the bag for a lot of things. Um, and for me, again, yeah, we have to make compromises with the surrounding, um, counties and, or not counties, sorry, um, districts. But, um, we also have to make sure that we're taking care of Cedar Springs, so.
How would you prioritize long-term projects versus short-term initiatives?
So, I would have to say that it would depend on what the initiative is and what the long-term project is. Um, because some things could be done, uh, obviously rather quick, others would take a long time, and you would just have to, again, prioritize what's most important for the city and also city council, um, so.
How do you evaluate the effectiveness of policies and programs implemented by the city council?
Talking to people, it's the only way you can. Um, and also just going like in public, asking people, you know what I mean, and again, it's just being, trying to be as, as vocal as possible with people of Cedar Springs, so.
What do you think are the most important qualities of an effective leader?
Um, listening, um, and also using people's strengths and bolster and trying to bring up their weaknesses. Um, I've always been told you, you work on people's strengths first to bring up their morale, and then work on their, then people will naturally work on their, their faults. Because they have better, um, uh, they're more competent in themselves, so.
Okay, uh, Cedar Springs is undergoing rapid development and growth. Do you propose to balance the needs of the existing residents with the demands of the development and growth of our city?
From what I see, it's jobs. People complaining about not having enough jobs, or there's too many people trying to get, you know, fast food jobs and stuff like that, and right now in our economy, I mean, obviously, we all know, fast food doesn't pay that much. Um, but I know a lot of people have kind of, you know, I, I don't want to say we're out there welcome, but have already exhausted, you know, working at, you know, display pack or working at CS, and there's a couple other ones, but I think those are um, more skilled trades than anything else. Um, so I would say jobs, um, trying to bring more jobs to Cedar Springs, and then working out, you know, what, what else we have to work out.
Uh, how do you handle criticism from constituents or the media?
Um, that's, that's funny, because my boss tells me at work that I'm probably the greatest worker about criticism, because I take it and then I use it to make myself better. Um, because at the end of the day, as, as long as it's constructive criticism, um, because at the end of the day, nobody's perfect. Everybody has something that they could critique, um, in a daily basis, um, and to say that, um, um, I don't have any, any issues is, is just ludicrous, so.
And the last one would be me again. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the city of Cedar Springs?
Jobs, again, um, so a couple days ago, I was coming home from the gym, and there was a lot of people lined out waiting for, um, food at the city impound. Um, and I mean, coming from Detroit and Levonia, I've seen it a lot worse, um, but in our smaller city, I feel like it shouldn't even be that bad, um, and again, I don't know, I can't, you know, judge them or whatnot, but at the same time, if we have even one better place for people to work, I feel like it would make a better, it would make a big difference.
Right, I think that's it, right? Absolutely.
That they are not all residents of the city.
Right, no.
That's open, that's open to the entirety of the public in the area, so that's a support to everybody, just so, okay, I didn't want it to be a misconception.
No, 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 no.
Oh, um, no, and it's not, it's just even, I mean, even helping one person in our, in our community, helps another person, helps another person, you know what I mean, so. You guys.
Your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have you take, um, hands, okay?
Okay, I can do that.
All right, if you would, please.
Give Renee a break.
Are they gonna be coming back, or are you having them come back at seven, or are they?
Tell them they're all welcome to come back at seven, a decision will be made at the seven o'clock meeting.
Yeah, so you can stick around now, or you can stay, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you hear that? He's gonna take hands, Braden. I said I would, I would have done it, but my, I'm kind of tongue-tied.
Well, I don't care, I mean. Well, have, so much water.
Tell us what your name is.
Fog.
Can you get just a little bit closer to the mic when you answer questions, because I can tell that you're, you've got a very nice voice, but we just can't hear it.
I'll be there.
Yeah. Are we ready? Go ahead, Rose, I think you're first.
Okay, Elizabeth, what experience do you have in local government and policymaking?
Honest, not a lot, um, I have taken or collected signatures for ballot proposals, and I have watched the city council online a few times. About, yeah, I put some signs in my yard. Representatives.
Alrighty. How would you ensure that the needs of all citizens are represented on the city council?
Just relax.
By being a good listener, um, collecting ideas, um, hearing the citizens and their needs, as well as the city's needs.
As a city council member, you'll be required to make decisions that make, that may not always align with popular opinion. Can you describe a situation where you had to make a tough decision, and how did you handle it?
First, before I make a decision, I pray. And I do hear from God, and then I really wouldn't want to get too specific, but, um, I like deciding whether to call CPS or not. One time I called CPS on somebody, another time I just helped the family with their children and, uh, counseled them myself, and, and, uh, so. Yeah, sometimes it's pretty tough, but I start with prayer first.
Okay, how do you handle disagreements between yourselves, yourself and others?
Start by listening and with empathy. Look at somebody as my enemy. And sometimes you can't agree, so it's okay.
What is your opinion on the importance of public engagement in the decision-making process?
I think it's very important, because people matter.
My turn. Are you familiar with the various laws and regulations that apply to municipal government?
I have been studying them a little bit online, I can't like quote them, no, but the list of, oh, I was going over the Michigan constitution, and just making a list of all those and starting to study that, but I've looked at some of your ordinances. Name them all, no.
No, we can't either.
Thank you.
Okay, how do you stay informed with current events and issues affecting our city?
Well, I into this, these meetings online sometimes, not a lot, but I have, and then I know some people that do attend these meetings, and they keep me informed. Know some things like the water issue. I know there's a water issue, um, things going on here too, a lot of wonderful things, like I moved away for a while and came back, and I'm like, whoa, we have a hotel. And a new park and a trailer, or trail, and yeah, so.
How would you approach budgeting for the city's services and programs?
You know, I'm not an expert on this stuff, I'm gonna have a lot of learning to do and listening and, uh, to trust some of the more experienced people here, that they know what they're doing, and but I would think, um, saving would be a good way to start, if you know you're proactive, and you know that you're gonna need something in the future, start saving for it. And, and look for savings, not borrowing all the time.
Collaboration with neighboring municipalities is essential for addressing. Shared challenges and pursuing common goals. How do you propose to strengthen partnerships and collaboration between Cedar Springs and neighboring communities?
Like I said, I really don't have an answer for that, I'm gonna, I'm going to have to learn and, and listen and watch and.
That's okay. How would you prioritize long-term projects versus short-term initiatives?
Get a short-term initiative accomplished quickly, then easily, then. Do those first and get them out of the way, and then go on to the bigger things.
How do you evaluate the effectiveness of policies and programs implemented by the city council?
Could you repeat that, please?
How do you evaluate the effectiveness of policies and programs implemented by the city council?
Surveys? Surveys of the people.
Thank you. What do you think are the most important qualities of an effective leader?
Definitely integrity, top on the list, um. Responsible. Empathy. And, uh, knowing how to manage finances. People.
Thank you.
Alright, Cedar Springs is undergoing rapid development and growth. What strategies do you propose to balance the needs of the existing residents with the demands and development and growth of our city?
I think. We have to make sure we know that what we're doing is a need. Find the citizens of the city and. What they can afford. They count to.
Right, how do you handle criticism from constituents or the media?
Than myself, so. Seeing so much. Being along or criticizing or whatever. I say just let it bounce off and, you know, each person is who they are, they think what they think and.
Okay, the last one is, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing the city of Cedar Springs?
Water issue. Biggest thing.
Elaborate on that at all, or just water?
High levels of. Some. The water, and it had to be, the well had to be shut down, and. I've also heard that. There's not enough, there's not enough water to all around for all the infra- infrastructure that's going in, but I don't know. It's just what told, so. Big issue, we need good water.
You're welcome, they're hard, they're hard, very tough questions, you did fine, thank you.
See, they asked me a few of them and I might not be here, okay.
Well, we're waiting, we do have another. One more, so we're probably have you go in the other room just for that one, if you don't mind.
There's nothing that's gonna be. You're not, um, we're not gonna need you for anything after the third um, interview, we'll adjourn the meeting and.
Alright, we're waiting on another gentleman.
Yeah, we're waiting on, um. I haven't seen your car all last couple of days, I was wondering if you were back.
Oh, here he is, okay. We need to shut the doors again, or no?
No, they have to stay open for the public.
Okay, I thought you did, shut them. Okay. Alright, I will do Pam's this time unless you wanna do it.
No, I don't mind, I can do Pam's. Okay, Mike. What experience do you have in local government and policymaking?
Can, can you state your full name so the public can hear, sorry?
My name is Michael Dean Maxson.
Okay, Michael, what experience do you have in local government and policymaking?
None.
Okay, and how would you ensure the needs of all citizens and are represented on the city council?
By staying informed, um, uh, been a resident of uh, the city for a very, very long time. Uh, um, I'm. I am a resident, I, um, uh. But uh, by staying informed, by staying on top of the issues, um. I, I can represent uh, uh, the residents of the city, um, uh. Through all my career, um, I, research has been a big part of my existence. Was a, was actually a professional researcher for the Flat River Community Library, um. The people would uh, come to the library with all manner of things and I would research it, um. Uh, talk about city codes, people would come in restoring one of their buildings and they would want to know. Something from the city code in the eighteen hundreds, and I would have to find it. Um, so, um, I'm very adept at finding information, um, and uh, uh, and, and. That's why you can, yeah, obviously stay informed.
Thank you.
As a city council member, you'll be required to make decisions that may not always align with popular opinion. Can you describe a situation where you had to make a tough decision and how did you handle it?
Um. Probably the most, the most tumultuous uh, time. Um, where I had uh, to juggle uh, people's uh, wants, needs and expectations. Um, I was the transportation coordinator for the uh, Muskegon Area District Library. Um, I was responsible um, for implementing the brand-new seventy-two thousand dollar bookmobile program. Um, obviously, a brand-new program, huge, shiny, beautiful, colorful. Bookmobile, everybody's extremely excited about it, the whole entire community, the county is excited about it. People from outside the county were excited about it, um, everybody wanted it. Um, just had a, just was a brand-new program, just getting it underground, woefully understaffed. Simply couldn't be everywhere at every time that people wanted us to be there. Um, we had to, uh, we, we literally had requests, like I say, from outside of the county, which we couldn't do, we had to stay within the county. It was a county-funded thing, we couldn't go to the schools that were outside of the county. Um, schools wanted us to be there more than we possibly could with, with the staffing, um. Uh, so I had, you know, a lot, a lot of people, I heard, I don't know how many times I heard, well, we voted for that village, you know, um. So, uh, a lot of, a lot of listening, a lot of, yeah, yeah, I understand, I, I understand, I'm sorry. Um, and explaining the situation, communication, always listening and communication will go so far. In helping smooth over uh, situations, um, but you also have to be confident knowing what you can't do. Um, and you have to be confident enough to tell people, even though you know that they're not gonna like it. I'm sorry, I can't do that, but if you, if you can negotiate, and if you can give them something. Um, that will also go a long way out of, of smoothing, smoothing over people who are unhappy. Um, if you can, and, and if you can show them that you're actually trying to make an effort to address their, their needs, their wants, their expectations. That you're not just blowing them off and you are really, really giving it consideration. Um, I think a lot of times, if, if, if people get the feeling that you are just listening to them. They, they know that you're, you're, you're giving them your time and consideration.
How do you handle disagreements between yourself and others?
Um. But, um, I, I, I hope. That uh, I, I listen and compromise, compromise enough to um, hold my values, obviously, in my position. Um, but hopefully, I'm not willfully digging in my heels. Just, uh, just to defend myself, um, I don't think I get too defensive. Um, I don't mind, I don't mind an argument, to be honest with you, um, uh, but, um. Uh, I've also known situations where. And, and just by hashing things out, by arguing, um, I've come to see points that I didn't consider. Um, my, mind may have not been completely changed, but there are, there have been significant things, well. Hey, you know, I didn't ever think of that, or I didn't know that, um, and if you can admit the things that you don't know. Um, then, then I think it paves the way for being able to compromise.
Got the next one. What is your opinion on the importance of public engagement in the decision-making process?
As a city council member, I mean, that's, I mean, pretty much the job description, I would think, you know, you're, you're representing the, representing the residents of the city. Um, uh, so you would, I, I, I would think that you would want, uh, the pulse of the city. Um, uh, if you. Reach out and engage with the, the people that you're representing, you are, you are better to know. Their, their thinking, their inclinations, uh, um, and as well as their, their concerns, their, and their wants. Needs and expecta- expectations.
Okay. I can know what you're gonna say here, but are you familiar with the various laws and regulations that apply to the municipal government?
Um, just in a very general, kind of lived here forever kind of way, I mean, um, I, I couldn't cite you the. You know, the, the statute number and all that kind of stuff, but, um, just, uh, just as a, as a basic resident.
Thank you.
How do you stay informed about current events and issues affecting our city?
I suppose. Um, I, I, I have to admit that I uh, don't do it as often as I probably should. Um, but obviously, online, um, I occasionally, and I, I have to be honest, it's occasionally, I occasionally check the. City's website, um, uh, I, I'm not, I have to admit, I am not a, a presence on social media. So, um, I don't check Facebook or anything like that, um, so it's, it's mostly the website and obviously. Through the grapevine, um, you know, I've been a long-time residence, uh, know a lot of other people that have been longtime residents. Um, and uh, there, there's always, whenever you have a get-together, there's always, hey, what's going on in the city, what's going on in the city? All my family grew up here and went to school here, anytime, anytime they come back, they're always, hey, what's going on, what's, what's new in Cedar, you know, so. Um, there's always that kind of personal, personal level to it as well.
Thank you, now I'm gonna do Pam's line. How do you approach budgeting for the city's services and programs?
That, quite frankly, um, I would have to learn uh, about, um, I have, uh, uh. Absolutely no inclination of, of, of what it is. Um, I assume, um, that there's, you know, processes that I can, I can learn about. I assume, um, that the, the administration, the city manager, um, um. Lots in both of it, when it comes to the council for consideration, um, I'm, I'm assuming that there's ways that we will be able to be informed. About what goes where and what is appropriate to be spent on what.
Thank you.
Okay, collaboration with neighboring municipalities is essential for addressing shared challenges. And pursuing common goals. How do you propose to strengthen partnerships and collaboration between Cedar Springs and neighboring communities?
Yeah, uh, I, I, I know, I know well enough that, um, there's, with, with the, the development out by the highway interchange. There's a lot of cooperation and things going on with Solon, um, yeah, obviously. Everyone is here to look out for their, their residents, including them, um, uh, keeping that in mind, keeping that they. Any resident, not just Solon, but Nelson, uh, any of the other, you know, townships, municipalities. Um, their number-one priority is to look out for their own residents. Uh, so I think you have to approach it, keeping that in mind, uh, with, keeping in mind that to. Your goal is to, uh, keeping the priorities of your own residents, um, uh, but keep in mind that, uh, the. It's always, you know, communications, um, uh, compromise where you can and it will do everybody good. Um, and, uh, but, uh, also keeping in mind that you are representing the residents of your city, your municipality.
Thank you. How would you prioritize long-term projects versus short-term initiatives?
Um. I think when you're, when you have uh, different levels of, of things like that, long-term projects, short-term initiatives. Um, you have to judge the urgency of each, obviously. Short-term initiatives, I'm guessing there may be a, a more of a time crunch, you have to know what you have to take, be able to take care of first. Um, long-term in- initiatives, uh, may involve, uh, more in-depth things, cause you're planning for. Intenses that may be down the road, so you may need to do more research, you may, may need to have more information. Um, so it's, so it's balancing priorities, um, and, and getting your information, um, in a timely manner. For, for each situation.
How do you evaluate the effectiveness of policies and programs implemented by the city council?
Um, a lot, uh, I would assume would, um, uh, depend on public feedback. Um, if something isn't working, I, I assume that you're gonna hear about it. Um, and obviously, there's the, the indisputable facts of the. Um, and obviously, there's the, the indisputable facts of the situation. If, um, something is over budget, you know, some things have to be adjusted. Um, if, if you can't see the real world results of, of something that has been implemented, um, you'll, you'll see that, and you'll know that. Um, so, you know, it's, it's constantly staying informed and evaluating, uh, policy as, as, as it is implemented and carried out.
What do you think are the most important qualities of an effective leader?
Um, honesty, obviously, you have to conduct yourself, um, um, with integrity at all times. You can't be compromised, uh, in, in a kind of a moral or ethical way. Um, obviously, if, as a, a representative of the residents, um, uh, listening, again, is, is a huge, a huge part of any, anything like that. Um, and, and communication, um, communication, um, uh, compromise where you can, stand firm where you have to. I, uh, think, um, the honesty and integrity, um, probably is the biggest thing, because that, that affects how, uh, people see you, and, uh, how they understand that, uh, that they, they can approach you, or that they can do business with you.
Okay, Cedar Springs is undergoing rapid development and growth. What strategies do you propose to balance the needs of our existing residents with the demands of the development and the growth of our city?
That's, um, that's a, that's a, that's an absolutely great question, because we've all seen, uh, seen, uh, the development out by the highway, the, the subdivisions there popping up. Uh, and, and, and that's a great thing. Um, uh, for Cedar to become a, a vibrant, not that it's not, but more people, the more the merrier, kind of, uh, what it is. But I think it's also very important that with the, the, the growth, that we just don't become another suburb of Grand Rapids, like all the other suburbs, that you don't even really know where they end and where the other city begins, that they, they don't really have, uh, not to, not to, uh, put them down or anything, but a lot of them don't really have, uh, their own identity anymore, they're just part of the sprawl. Um, so, while I think it's great to encourage growth, and that brings with it not only a vibrancy of, and, and, uh, of the people that are, will be living here, but obviously, um, the tax income, tax revenue and that kind of thing. So it's, I think it's great to encourage it, but at the same time, Cedar, um, has a, has a character. Um, it's, it's Main Street, it's the small-town kind of feel. Um, it's the schools, it's the, it's the cooperation between the city and the schools, it's, it's Red Flannel Day. Um, so, it, and I'm not, I don't, I don't even know if I know how you manage it, but you've got to encourage growth without losing the small-town character that is Cedar. Um, uh, like I say, um, uh, by being as inclusive of, as you can to new people, um, by, by managing the growth and the subdivisions in a way that, um, that, that invites participation with the city. Um, and the, and the same thing with businesses that may be at the inter- interchange. Um, the residents, obviously, will love to have the goods and services, the fast food, the groceries, everything out, and out in the, out in the, at the interchange. But hopefully, hopefully, we can get them to come downtown, uh, come down to Main Street, go to the brewery, um, go to the amphitheater, you know, catch, catch some of the, some of the music that goes on there during the week. Go to the theater, catch a three-dollar show, um, catch one of the plays. Um, so, so hopefully, that you can, we can manage it, uh, so the growth feeds into, um, the, the survival and the development of, of downtown, which I think has a lot to do with the character of, of Cedar.
Thank you. How do you handle criticism from constituents or the media?
Um, nobody likes criticism, um, and, uh, I won't lie, um, whenever I'm criticized, rightly or not, my first instinct, anyway, is to be defensive. Um, uh, hopefully, uh, I'm intelligent and thoughtful enough to, um, uh, realize when I'm being defensive, and listen to what, what they're saying, um, evaluate whether it's a valid criticism, and hopefully, I can understand that, and, um, uh, be truthful enough with myself, say, okay, maybe I need to back off that, or maybe I need to change my thinking on that. Um, uh, and, uh, be, be, be open to the criticism. Um, um, uh, and, uh, hopefully, if, if it is valid criticism, um, uh, I can adjust my, my thinking and my actions based on it. Um, and if it's not valid criticism, um, or if you don't, if you don't feel that it's valid criticism, um, then that's kind of where the diplomacy comes in. Um, you have to, um, uh, not let your defensiveness, um, get to the point where you're kind of being a jerk, you know, you have to be able to, um, listen again, and compromise and communicate.
Thank you.
The last one. Uh, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing the city of Cedar Springs?
Obviously, the basic things of, of just the nuts and bolts of, of, uh, meeting the residents' needs. Um, but again, I think, I think it goes back to the previous question, is managing the growth, um, without losing, uh, the small-town character of Cedar. Um, uh, and, um, and it's, it's, it's gotten so much better in the last several years, but everybody here has heard the term Cedar tucky. Um, Cedar, ha, 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 in the past, and, and like I say, it's gotten so much better. Cedar hasn't had the greatest of reputations, we are small-town hicks, we got red flannels, we celebrate red underwear, yuck, 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 you know? Um, and, and so I think that i- it's, it's gotten a lot better, but that's always gonna be a, a situation where we're always gonna be, you know, the, 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 the hillbillies to the Rockford snooties, you know? Um, so, so Cedar has come a long way, but I think it's always, um, gonna be a challenge, and something that, uh, we have to do is to promote, uh, the great things that are going on in Cedar. Um, there's a reason why we're growing, people want to be here, because it's, it's, it's a cool community, it's, it's, we still hold on to that small-town character while offering all the goods and services you need, and if you want to go to the bigger things, twenty minutes and you're down in the city. Um, so again, uh, guarding Cedar's reputation and promoting Cedar's reputation, I think, is also, um, uh, uh, an important and ongoing challenge.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darling, did you let him know? Meeting. Stay till seven, or come back at seven, whatever you choose.
Okay, all right. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
To council comments.
Diverse. And, uh, I'm impressed, but I'm also somewhat depressed, simply because there were two seats open. And, uh, I would love to have seen more than just two people running. Matter of fact, there might have been one less, if there was other people running for office, because I probably would not have. Uh, I just didn't like the idea initially that, uh, there was two seats open, and, uh, they, uh, it wasn't until the last minute, and I decided that I finally found out that we actually had a second person running. So there's, I'm, I guess I appreciate competition. Okay, and I'd love to see people interested enough to go for an office. If there's two open, we should have five, or four, or three, there should be something there to give the residents uh, something to pick from. So, I I appreciate what we went through tonight. Glad we had to again, simply because our, uh, second board member had to move out of the district rather quickly. But, uh, we'll get along. That's it.
Mr. Barble.
Yeah, all three candidates, uh, pretty impressive resumes for all three of them, and I got a lot to think about in the next hour, a lot to review, and I'm just gonna say, too, I'm not basing my vote a hundred percent on how they interviewed. I'm gonna be looking at, relooking at all their resumes. And really be thinking about a lot here in the next hour, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Mrs. Powell.
Well, I went to the music last night at the amphitheater, and they, they had a great band, and there was a pretty sizable crowd. I think we were looking at at least a hundred and fifty, I hope it grows. Um, beautiful night, lots of kids running and running and running, which is my favorite thing to watch. And, uh, the car show, went to the car show, they had a real good turnout. So I'm just happy to see these activities coming right along and developing every year to be more fun and more people, and just a great joy to see it all, so, sorry I was late. I had a, uh, very important women's club, uh, activity to, uh, go to, and we had a great time, and I just kind of got lost in all the the, um, terrific movie that we watched as a group, so, sorry about that, but I'm glad I got here. And, uh, thank you to everybody who showed up to interview, appreciate it.
Great. I'm still surprised at how little, um, people know about, like, the process for Cedar Springs, only because, um, you know, like, we're on YouTube, and no one knows it, and we've been on it since, um, what is it called? Covid? Four years now. So the commi- like, just being able to find that information, um, don't think we need to figure out a better way, or, or, or whatever, because I think that we just have so many special things here, and we are growing. Um, we have some good candidates, there's a lot to think about, um, they're all different in their own ways, which is great. Um, but glad that we've had, uh, the few that have come along, it's been fantastic to hear. Surprising, and it's, and it's a good surprise, so, uh, that's all I got.
Um, I was glad to, um, see that we did end up with three applicants. Um, I did re- I read the resumes before we came, and I was like, well, those are pretty impressive, you know, um, a lot of volun- volley- volunteerism, I can't speak tonight, sorry, folks. Um, also, um, just they, they, all three seemed like they were willing to, they really wanted to have this position, so it is gonna take a lot of thought to really, um, because every one of them would have a good, um, have good things to bring, so, um, that's what I've got, um, and if we don't have any further business, do we have any further business? I will, um, adjourn this meeting at six fourteen.